We'll call the Pownell Select Board, regular meeting Thursday, January 9th, 2014, 7:00 PM. For the agenda approval, approval of minutes 12, 19, 13. Warrants, mail, road foreman's monthly board meeting. Old business will be personnel, policy amendment. New business, EPA cleanup grant application for former Tanrey Hydro site. Information and questions. I'd like to bring up just a small thing on emergency numbers to be noted. And barring any other information or things added to this, adjourn to road fund and general work budget, work session.
Motion accepted. Second it.
All in favor.
Aye.
Approval of the minutes 12, 19, 13.
Two more. Second it.
All in favor. Payroll 12, 22, 13 to 12, 27, 13, in the amount of $8,055.44. Payroll 12, 29, 13 to 1, 3, 14, in the amount of $5,551.8. Payroll 1, 5, 2, 14 to 1, 10, 2, 14, in the amount of $7,880.69. Counts payable 12, 27, 13, in the amount of $21,698.91. Your health insurance is 4,459 in there. Electricity, so GMP is 5,666. Payroll transfer 2,300. Those are your larger items in that particular count. Counts payable 1, 13, 14, in the amount of $8,786.49. IRIS payments, Department of Taxes payment, American Rock Salt, are your large ones in Counts payable 1, 10, 14, in the amount of $17,246.19. American Rock Salt 3, 371. Champagne oil, champagne oil, 1060. Osterman Gas Service 2069, and Staples 1114, in our IRS payment of 2680 are your larger items in that one. Any questions on the warrants?
If not, I have a motion. Motion, second it.
All in favor.
Aye.
Mail. Okay. From the State of Vermont Department of Taxes, letter of agreement for computer assistant mass appraisal, C.A.M.A., cost table service. The town of Pownell will agree to pay the sum of $238.81 to the Vermont Department of Taxes for said licenses and acknowledgements. It terminates on June 30th, 2014. What is your pleasure? Everybody's read this, I'm assuming, and...
Yeah, that's for Nemrick.
Right.
Why would it be only for about six months?
I imagine it's a six month. If your town is...
When does that have a standard for them? Every six months to Nemrick we have to...
C.A.M.A. system currently used.
We do this over here.
Motion signed.
Second it.
Okay, we got a motion, a second, all in favor.
Aye.
It's just my signature needed, so...
So I bet you Nemrick got it. Somewhere.
News and notes from the BCRC, January 2014. Mixed use development in the Bennington area, their newsletter. This one I'm not, okay. All right, Vermont Rural Fire Protection Task Force. This is request for financial support to Vermont Dry Hydrant Program. This program has been successfully managed over the past 15 years by the Northern Vermont Resource Converse, yeah, Conservation and Development, R.C.N.D. Council. Jumping down, it says sadly, that has had a difficult decision and closed their doors. Jumping down again, it says the Dry Hydrant Program has fortunately found a new home with Vermont Association of Conservation District, V.A.C.D. They're asking for requests that you include $100 appropriation in your 2014 town budget. Question being, should this be a ballot article? Or is this something we just roll with and...
Do they ask for a ballot article because they didn't petition?
No.
Is the board's policy the petition, or are they just asking for a donation?
Just says we include $100 appropriation in your 2014 budget in order to assist with this program transition. Could we... I'm not really sure how we got what we did before on this. Would it be wise to table us and have one of the fire chiefs?
We've always applied for funding through them. They're telling you now they have no more funding.
Right, and they have another association that's taken over.
Right, normally we don't send money. This is the first time.
Yep, so this is probably just in the paperwork to get everything changed over.
How many Dry Hydrants do we have in the town?
Four.
Five?
Four, I think we lost one. Isn't that right, Casey?
Yeah.
We got four, because we lost one on Mount Anthony.
Did we get our four from this association?
I'm sure it'd been tied into this somehow. But this situation has changed.
Association is no longer an existence, so we got a new association. So it looks to me like they're looking for a $100 donation. Should we research it a little more, or what? It's $100 bucks.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's not really...
Yeah.
It keeps us up to speed, I guess, on it, so by the time we research it, we spend more than $100 doing it.
Do we have a count in any kind of amount of, or just put in the budget?
I'm sure we must have. Got to be something on.
Motion we add it to our budget?
Got a motion to be added?
Add it to the budget, so then it's in there...
One time.
One time. Okay, thank you.
Okay, you want to amend it to one time?
Motion to add it to the budget one time.
Okay, I have a motion for one time, a budget of $100.
A second it.
Okay, all in favor.
Aye.
All right. I don't think there's any signature needed, it's just... Land use permit for William Barney to continue on his gravel excavation out on Maple Grove, right. It shows the restrictions and how much usage he can get out per year until the year 2018. It's located on 12.7 acres, at the west of the Pownell landfill on Maple Grove Road. And the goodie part, delinquent tax on our sewer. In the total amount of $16,407.98 today. You don't have a sheet in your book right here if you want to tell them to you. I don't know when's the last time we did one of these. Delinquent taxes. Interest is $25,539.67. Other expenses included $1,148.87, for a grand total of $86,707.57. I don't have mine either to see what the difference was. Just under $400,000 in delinquencies. Okay, we have a letter from the Bennington County Regional Commission, Roundfield Assessment Grant Application, which needs to be signed from us. We, do this as a town, can give the letter to Jim Henderson. Pownell's commitment to continue work closely with the BCRC through calibration and shared resources whenever possible. Read this roughly.
Motion second it.
Okay, a motion, a second, any questions, thoughts? What's up? Call them both, aye?
Aye.
Okay, we have a letter from the Housack River Watershed Association, writing on behalf of the Board of Directors of the Housack River Watershed Association, hurrah, which voted unanimously on January 6th, 2014, to support Pownell's grant proposal for the Environmental Protection Agency to clean up PCBs at the site in North Pownell Tanrey Dam, adjacent to Strobridge Park. It goes on, but it's, "We look forward to working with many stakeholders in this project, including the town of Pownell, to improve the water quality and increase recreation opportunities at the park and on the Housack River." And last but not least, Rosemary Pelletier's written a letter saying that she is resigning from the Pownell Town Office Committee. Appreciate the time that they appointed the committee, and it lays on between the committee and the Pownell Planning Committee, a role that Jim Wissers also fills. It's been her pleasure to work with Frank Lamb and the entire committee for the past year, and serve as secretary. Sincerely, Rosemary Pelletier. We can accept that with our thanks.
Motion through, accept it.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That concludes our mail. Road Foreman's monthly board meeting.
This afternoon I had a ride down to the Bridge 42. I met with Dana's Construction, and they were gonna give us a quote, repairs of the piers on the bridge. Took pictures and gave me a brief description of what they're gonna need to do to repair them. There's, as the piers come up, there's a step, and then there's what goes up to the actual beams, and they're called seats, that the beams actually set in. Just the ones on the outside are actually the ones that are cracked. So those will need to be all chiseled out, sandblasted, and of course, the hardest part is getting a scaffolding or something so they can stand on it and make it so that none of the stuff enters the river. So that's, that's gonna account for the majority of the cost. The repairs will, aren't gonna be that hard, what he said. And he said that, he asked me if February would work, and I says, as long as the weather's cooperating, it doesn't really make a difference, as long as it's done before April 15th, because that's the date that we had signed to the state on the bridge reports. That's the, that's the news on that.
Now, that would restructure the lower section.
That's going to...
Preparation for...
Sure, up the, I don't think anything has actually moved, but there's, they're called seats, what the actual beams set in, so that they don't move. And it's just old concrete. I mean, it was done in the 50s, so. It actually was repaired, some spots where you can see that Hank Sweeney did in 98, but I don't know just how, I had just started, and they were just finishing up when I, the first time I had a chance to look at it, so I don't know exactly what they did, but you can see some of the newer concrete that are on the actual piers, so.
Casey, can I ask you a question about that?
Sure.
That deck eventually is gonna have to come off of that entirely, right?
Right.
I was talking with another select person from another town, in the Hannafords, there last week, and he suggested, he said, you know, he says Daleys can make the decking for that and set it right on there with a crane.
Yep.
Precast.
Precast.
Yep, pre-stressed.
Yep, all pre-stressed, precast, et cetera. And he said that might be the way to go, he said, because it's gonna cut your installation costs down, and probably would be a much faster construct in that way.
Yep. The gentleman that I deal with in, at Peckham's, that's, his forte is the concrete, not so much the precast, but concrete. And we did have a conversation about that. The only problem is, is probably twice the cost than pouring it. I'm not sure exactly, but that's what he led me to believe. It's worth a shot, we've got the next four years to come up with as many costs and as many avenues to come up with cash as we can get.
We're thinking of the installation costs rather than the...
Right. Just having a streetlight, you'd have, you'd have to have a streetlight on both sides. Of course, they're solar, so you got one on one end and one on the other, is like $24,000 just to have them there for a month. So anytime you can eliminate one facet of, the thing about the other, the thing about the replacing the deck in precast, is you're doing one section at a time, so you're actually closing the road completely. Whereas if you did one side of the deck at a time and poured it, you'd still have one lane of traffic.
Which we talked about on our site visit.
You would still need the lights, or traffic control, depending on how, you know, you get well organized and have everything fall in a pre-designed way, and in two weeks it could be done. But that's in a really good day, or a good two weeks.
So you think the precast...
Like I say, we're gonna look into every avenue that we can possibly look into. My thought is, is like I say, is the most important thing is, is we need to come up with the initial complete cost, before we can actually apply for any grant money, because we have to actually pay for the whole project.
And not get reimbursed.
Right. You can't get any grant money, so. That's the thought on that. And like he said this afternoon, he didn't, you know, there, he doesn't think the beams are in bad shape. He's not sure if the, the people that do the reports on the bridge would actually go for making it much wider than what it is. There's five beams underneath that bridge, across, and they're five and a half feet apart, which is a pretty substantial bridge. So in order to get asphalt and a membrane poured down, you'd have to have at least nine inches thick deck. There's eight, a little over eight now, on there now. So in order to be able to actually make up for the weight of the asphalt, you'd need at least another inch or inch and a half concrete. So. If you start looking into it, there's a lot more to it than...
We're talking about widening that, so...
Yes, and it does need it.
Yep.
And the, years ago, and I'm not sure how long ago it was, they actually added an apron to the, well...
West end.
The west end.
Yep.
Because you just couldn't make the corner, it was just so narrow. But if it was, in a perfect world, it'd be nice to be four feet wider than what it is. Whether or not we could actually do that, that's up to an engineer from the state.
Just a suggestion.
Right, yep, anything, anything will work. Give it a shot. I don't know what else you want to tell you. We've been plowing a little snow, we've been watching it rain. We got an inch and a half of rain the other day there, and that took care of the snow that we plowed. Made some issues with some ice.
Some ice, some sand. Used some salt.
Oh, it's, well, we've used probably 300 tons of salt so far this year. And it's low in January, first part of January.
Which is probably more than we used all last year.
Actually, we used 320, I think, last year. But years prior, we've used five, 520.
Yep.
So three or four years in a row, we hit almost an exact same amount. Equipment seems to be holding up pretty decent. I mean, it's been icy, and you know, you take the days where it's a warm snow, and it's real slick, you got our used chains, so we've been replacing chain blanks, and the roads, when they softened up and it went right to mud, it made the roads really rough, and it's hard to plow, and we've been welding plows for the last three days. The shoes on the bottoms of the fissures with the springs, re-angled the plow off, and the first thing it does is hits them guards, and it's been, it's been tough.
Yep, and we're not the only town putting up with it. Anybody's got dirt roads, has been in that same...
Tried to take material out to, well, it was like three weeks ago, that when it got really bad and thawed out, we hauled stone all that day, and by the next day it was froze solid, and you couldn't do nothing. We tried to even cuff the tops off of the grader, and you couldn't do nothing. Luckily, it isn't as bad as what it could have been, I suppose. If it didn't freeze back up, it'd be a real mess. We've been replacing road ID signs, and they're continuing to, for whatever reason, want them signs. And I don't, I don't think any, they're not worth much, I think it's just maybe a novelty or something, I have no idea. But I even had to order more letters today, because we ran out again. Come 25 in a package, so.
Is there any other material those road signs can be made of, something?
Well, I mean, it's, it's a pretty good system that they're on. The problem is, is they get up there, even, you know, you try to, six or seven feet in the air, you have to get up on something in order to be able to reach to break the sign off, and they just fold it back and forth until it breaks around the bracket. They don't take the bracket, they don't take nothing. So it's a matter of re-lettering a new sign blank, and just unscrewing the little screws that they got in there and putting it on back on. I mean, they're not taking the whole post and the bracket and everything else, they're just taking the blank and all the letters. But that's still, that one piece is probably, there's $20 worth of material, not counting the labor of putting, making one.
I guess my point is, is there, you know, PVC or something? I don't know whether they're taking it for the metal or whatever, who knows?
It must be just a novelty of the...
Is there something that would be more durable, like a PVC or something? I don't know.
I'll tell you the truth, I think that this is the first year that anybody's ever taken a vast majority of signs. I mean, you know, every once in a while you'd see one missing, one broke off, and you could see where they, just fold it back and forth. I'll tell you a perfect example, was Funny Farm Road, right next to the, heading toward the transport station.
And you could see that.
For some reason, that somebody wants that sign.
Right, they like the wording or something, but some of this is not.
Right. But other than that, I mean, the rest of them, there's some signs that, when E911 first came out, I hired a guy specifically just to put up signs, because we couldn't do it. And he did a good job, and he got every one of them, and the majority of those signs are still up. And they've been up since, for 15 years now.
So as far as you know, no other municipalities are using any type of different material or anything?
I think there, well, there's, there's different signs, like Bennington uses the taller blanks with the ribs on them, we don't use those. Williams Towners is basically a totally different kind of sign, too, so.
So you have any idea, maybe a possibility, assumption, that maybe somebody driving home in a pickup truck to get the elevation up?
I don't know exactly how they're doing it. I know they're doing it, the first road they got was Hidden Valley. They got every sign but one on Hidden Valley. And then they started on North Pownell Road, two, maybe three weeks after that, they got, not all of them, but they got some of the bigger, a couple of the bigger ones, and the smaller ones down North Pownell Road. And then they started up on Carpenter Hill. They got to the, West Carpenter Hill, and I think there was a couple other ones they got, too. Those are the ones that I know about, that were actually broke off. Yeah, I mean, just, you just, as long as somebody's, everybody's aware that this is happening, I'm sure, you know, it's probably happened two o'clock in the morning, and nobody's out. It's one of those things.
Well, keep us posted of it. If it continues to happen, I think we need to take...
Yeah, because I did mention it last time, was it five weeks ago that I was here? So it's, it's, this summer's got to be reminding the public about.
Be vigilant.
Other than that, we've just been repairing and trying to, we've been trying to get into a gravel bank down there, but everything has just, has been saturated and soaked, and then froze, and thawed again, and then froze again, so it's tough to get into anything. We're gonna have to start getting some more sand put up, because that building over there only holds so much. We've been going through it pretty heavy here, so. That's what we're mentally been trying to do. And that, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. Okay, the next we have is personnel policy admin, what I'd like to do if the board wouldn't mind, why don't we slide that right down to the end, so we can continue on and...
All in favor?
Mm-hmm. All right, everyone in favor of the, aye?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, let's go to new business EPA cleanup grant application for the Tanrey site.
How are we doing, folks?
Very good, thank you.
Glad to be here, nice to see you. Although I was thawing out 3,000 feet of water line today in Pownell, so, but happy to be at the board tonight. Yes, my tenants were less than responsible with the water source, so. I guess I'll, I'll probably start off by giving just a quick overview of, because I think there's probably gonna be some folks here or listening that maybe aren't up to speed on, and I'll just summarize very quickly where we're at overall. Back in, I guess it was June, mid-June, after about a year, year and a half of negotiation, Housack River Hydro, of which myself and Bill Scully co-own, agreed upon with the town of Pownell... of Powell, an option agreement to conduct pre-development and feasibility studies on the old hydroelectric facility in hopes of redeveloping it. And since that time, we have been in touch with numerous local, state and federal agencies and local community groups about that project and about ways to move forward with it. The principal issue with the redevelopment of the tannery is what to do with the sediment that is PCB laid behind the dam and how best to remediate that before we can go forward with any redevelopment activities. So that's kind of the crux of the issue. It's what's spooked off a lot of folks in the past that have tried to develop it. Myself and Bill are very confident that we can put together a plan to satisfy all stakeholders to come up with a solid plan going forward to redevelop it, put it back into use and also incorporate several different components of uses with the facility, including recreation, you know, obviously getting the site back online, generating revenue for the town and a host of other things. So, you know, those are the primary focuses of what our activities have been comprised of in the past year, year and a half. One of the first things we did when we entered into our option agreement was notify FERC that we had done so. We made a filing with them, updating them as to the option agreement. They have a copy of that, they have new contact information for myself and Bill, and we also had to give them a tentative project timeline of how we saw things at the time. So we have done that. I have filed that with the town. But in short, I'll just give you just a quick highlight of it. And since when, since then, when we filed that back in August, things have changed a little bit, not drastically, but I anticipate that some of these dates will get pushed back slightly. Nothing drastic, but slightly. So as of right now, we have, back in November, we applied for a Vermont DEC Brownfields reuse grant, again, on behalf of the town. And the reason why that's happening is because the town actually owns the property, so the town has to be the recipient and the entity applying for the grant. So Huza River Hydro is providing all that legwork, providing that information to the town for their review, and then we're applying on their behalf. So you'll hear us talk about that quite a bit as we go forward. So we applied for that Vermont DEC grant, we've been in touch with them, we have not been officially denied or awarded anything, and we are still in the process of determining if we are eligible for any funding for that. One of the things that they requested was a detailed estimate for a Phase 2 study, which needs to be done. There has been done a Phase, the Phase 1 study has been done back in, was it 2009, Jim? I want to say, it was 2009. That was coordinated with the BCRC. And a Phase 2 is just kind of that next step to determine specific contaminant levels and then actually generate a corrective action plan, otherwise known as a CAP plan, for the cleanup activity. So we worked with Lincoln Applied Geology, who has had some experience working at the tannery on some cleanup issues. They provided an estimate for the Phase 2 study. I did provide a copy of that to the town and I think it was a little over $100,000 for a Phase 2 study, which incorporated the actual study and then also that corrective action plan for the cleanup. So there's a couple of things, you know, put into that one initiative. So what we're hoping to do with that Vermont DEC grant is secure some funding to apply towards that Phase 2 study. And then from there, we have applied or in the process of applying for this EPA grant, which is the subject of tonight's meeting. That application is due January 22nd and that is a cleanup grant. So that is taking all the information that we gather from the Phase 2 study and the corrective action plan, and then we use those funds or a portion of those funds towards the cleanup. So those are kind of the two, the two things that we're actively working on, that we should have some, we should have some answers on the Vermont DEC grant probably within the next month. And then on the EPA grant, because of the government shutdown in the fall, some of the timelines have gotten compressed, some of them have gotten shifted out, so typically I think they're making those award announcements sometime in mid to late spring, so we anticipate that it'll probably be sometime in that period, maybe pushed out a little bit with the shutdown. So come, you know, come spring, early summer, we should have a very good handle on the funding situation from that, from those two respects and obviously we'll keep you folks informed as those move forward. So going forward, assuming that we are awarded something from those grants, which we anticipate getting something from them, whether we get the full amounts, I don't know. But regardless, we are looking to begin Phase 2 study sometime in April and we will, we are looking to proceed with that regardless of the grant applications that we get. So if we don't receive any grant funding, Huza River Hydro is planning to, you know, fund the cost of those studies per our option agreement with the town. We anticipate those studies to take several months, anywhere from two to four months, from what the engineers have told us. And once those studies are complete, we can move into a cleanup plan. Right now, we have in our tentative timeline, we have a cleanup scheduled starting sometime late this summer with the completion by the end of the year and then a commissioning sometime in mid-2015 of the actual site.
What method are you going to use to clean it up?
Well, right now, there really only exists one method in there, and that is actual excavation of the material and removing it off-site. Interestingly enough, I actually received a phone call this afternoon, it was completely out of the blue, but a gentleman down in Louisiana who has been working on the BP oil spill and was part of one of the companies that invented a new method to clean up some of this oil without removing the actual contamination off-site to a disposal facility. And he gave me a very brief description of it, I didn't have a lot of time to talk, but essentially it provides some filtering process on-site for both heavy metals and for bacteria contaminants. And the material needs to be basically lifted up or moved from its current state, put through this process, and then can either go back into where it originally was or left as is. I briefly looked at his website that he sent me, they're working in a variety of states, one of which is California, which has very strict regulations for allowing these procedures, so they apparently have made quite a bit of headway. Beyond that, I don't know much about it, but I plan on meeting with them and discussing what options may exist for it. So they claim it to be a very, a new and exciting way of cleaning up these contaminants. So that, apparently the EPA and Coast Guard and a lot of folks that have been involved with these cleanups in the past are very eager to use it and see it go forward, so. But as of right now, the only viable options, that viable option that we see is an actual excavation of the material and disposal off-site.
Like a dredging?
Basically like a dredging, yep. And most likely that material will end up out of the country, most likely in Canada at this point. The one thing that we did pursue, Bill and myself did speak with the folks at the state and EPA about possibly capping that in place, but they've never done that in a water environment before, so they've kind of poo-pooed that pretty quickly, not looking to experiment in the Huza itself. But that was something that we did float as an alternative to us dredging at our disposal.
Are you sure that there's contamination in that?
There, as part of the Phase 1 testing that was done, there were contaminant levels that exceeded the levels that they would like to see, so that classified as contamination. However, the Phase 2 will either verify that or disprove it. So one of the big unknowns that folks at the state and the EPA are not, they don't know how to quantify it, is the effects of Irene, you know, what Irene did to that. We don't, we just simply don't know. And so that's part of Phase 2, is that, part of Phase 2, they would physically actually put a barge in the water and do some more core samples in the river. So they would actually do testing and measure those levels. So we'd have some hard data to actually go off of.
Did you ask DEC for a specific dollar amount?
We did. We asked for the $200,000, the maximum, and we anticipate to do the same for the EPA.
Another idea I have is, once, if you get the money, I would recommend that you look for some, go for some other proposals other than Lincoln Applied. Nothing against Lincoln Applied, because they do good work, but I found in doing this sort of work that there can be quite a disparity amongst firms in what they charge for the same type of work.
Sure.
And I believe it was back in 2010, we had some estimates done on what it would cost to do the same.
Yeah, I think it was Johnson Company.
The Johnson Company.
Yep.
And I believe, I don't know specifically, but I believe it came in about around $85,000.
The one I saw was about $105,000, but maybe it included other things, I don't know. Because the only reason why is when I got Lincoln's, I actually pulled up the one, the Johnson version that I had.
Yeah.
And I was surprised at actually how close they were. But regardless, I think, I think it would be worth giving Johnson another look at it and then a third firm, so. I think having three proposals is wise, you know.
That's generally what we do, is we go out and get three proposals if we can.
Sure, absolutely.
And DEC might actually require you to do that.
Yep, and the, both Johnson, actually, I'm sorry, Johnson is no longer on DEC's short list, which was a shocker to me, so.
Oh, really?
Yes, and Lincoln Applied Geology, along with a few others, was, so I was surprised that, yeah, I was surprised to hear that. Yeah, so, but anyways, yes, I definitely agree with you 100%.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I was wondering, on your webpage the other night, you've got $300,000 listed as the cost of the excavation, the dredging, the cleanup.
That's just an estimated cost.
I know, is that a modest estimate? Because, I mean, you're looking for 200,000 from the EPA grant, 200,000 from the Brownfields, that's 400,000.
So the, go ahead, I'm sorry.
And you've got 117,000 roughly for this, I think it's Phase...
Phase 2.
Phase 2.
Sure.
Puts it well above the two amounts that you're getting. I know that you're going to input like about 40,000 or 20% of this. Is that right?
Correct.
Just on the one though?
Correct.
Just on the EPA.
Or, actually, they both have a matching requirement.
Okay. Obviously, you've got to come up with some sort of cap thing, and I'm just wondering, will there be a, this plan to either remove it by truck, I assume?
Mm-hmm.
Will the town or associated towns around here be aware of what's going on as far as that and have a chance to do some input at a public hearing?
Absolutely, yep. It's a very thorough and strict process, of which I have very, I would have very little control over. It's completely governed by both Vermont DEC and EPA and, you know, they have, they've done this numerous times, obviously throughout the country. They have very strict procedures, notification requirements. It's a very public process. Folks aren't coming in at the middle of the night, putting things in barrels and sliding them down the river. I mean, it's a very open, thorough process that's ample notices given to folks within the region. It's, so it's, yes, I mean, it's very public, very open, ample opportunities to comment and provide input, so.
I'm just wondering, the other question I had in reading your page there was that you're going to be excavating or taking material out behind the dam primarily, at different levels behind the dam.
Correct.
And won't that create pressure on the dam? In other words, you're going to increase the depth, and I know in your, the study, you talked about watching the depth of the water. Won't that put a pressure on the dam, more pressure? And my question is the liability for the town. Say the dam cracks, breaks, where's the town, where's it staying with the town?
Yep, so a couple of things. One, the dam itself was constructed and engineered to, you know, withstand that full column of water behind it. When it was constructed, there was no sediment, you know, built up, it was probably built out of bedrock from everything that we can tell from the construction documents that we've looked at. So it was engineered to withstand that water. So, I mean, that's a pretty fair assessment and...
Yeah, but that was 100 years ago, wasn't it?
The dam 55?
I thought 55.
Rip, over on the walls, the pictures of the creation of...
I watched it go, but so it wasn't 100 years ago.
Ain't you old?
Come on, Ron, he's not that old.
998.
That's why we call him Rip.
The last question I have, if I can, where could residents make comments to the EPA? Is there an EPA address where we can make comments?
Well, for the purposes of this grant application, the comments actually would be made through the town or to myself, and then we include those in the application themselves.
You do, okay.
Yep, we include them in. And then going forward, if we have any additional work, we would have additional public hearings that would be available to folks to make comments, so. So this application is basically the town applying for the grant to the EPA, and then this hearing tonight or this public meeting is just a chance for folks to see the cleanup alternatives in that draft, what they call ABA, and provide it if needed from the town or any residents in the area.
The original dam was constructed...
It was the Wood Dam.
Yeah.
I'm a town resident and I've been serving as one of Powell's reps to the BCRC for a while, working with Jim on the Brownfields issues, including the initial work that was done on the dam. And I'm just here basically to offer my support for Dennis and Bill as they go forward in this. We got to a point with BCRC where costs were getting pretty high to continue the work that was going to be required by the state environmental folks, and we ran into a number of regulatory hurdles, not the least of which were policy issues about how much of the river needed to be examined and dealt with. And I'm glad that they're going forward with this. I think it's great that we can move the project along. These guys are to be lauded for their efforts of taking the bull by the horns. The problem that we have in Powell with the sediments that have come downstream is a regional problem involving the watershed that exists over several states and what we have came to us from basically North Adams in the form of the PCBs. And the attitude has been on the part of regulatory agencies, well, if Powell wants to use the dam, you deal with it. Well, that's nice, but give us the resources to do it. So I'm hoping that EPA will fund this and other projects as well to go forward, to get cleaned up, what can be cleaned up, and see it as a regional issue that they need to deal with and not make it Powell's problem. And I'm hoping that when these guys get to the end of doing all this stuff, that they don't have more to deal with down the road, that the regulatory issues get cleared up in some definitive way and that they do their job in telling us what needs to be done and then we can go forward and do it. But it's great to see it moving along. It drives me crazy that an old environmental issue that we had nothing to do with creating is a stumbling block for us getting the dam into productive service and contributing to the health of the planet by getting carbon out of the atmosphere by replacing burning fossil fuels with hydropower. It's just, it's just, it's been a frustrating problem and, you know, I just, anything I can do to, you know, support and help and, you know, see this pushed along, I think it just, it's great that you guys have picked up the gauntlet here and are moving ahead.
That's about what it is too. I will say on the insurance side, liability side, when we start going down the road and start actually doing activities, there are both state and federal insurance programs that are geared specifically towards these types of activities, which we are required to enroll in. They're not, they're not, you know, we have to do it.
You have to enroll.
We have to enroll in them, so. And that addresses a lot of those things, like, you know, if we, during the cleanup process, you know, the contaminants were to go downstream for whatever reason and, you know, contaminate something and somebody wanted to commit it to the town, the insurance covers that.
Okay.
So, you know, fortunately for us and for the town, you know, this is not the first cleanup site that they've had to go through. They've had many to have, they've had to deal with over the past, you know, 50, 100 years, so. And they've been probably working on one of the bigger ones in the country over on Hudson with the LGE issue, so they've become pretty adept at dealing with some of these issues, particularly in a riverine environment, so.
And I agree with you, Walt, on this, that's a natural resource down there that has been there for many years and a lot of water goes over that every day that could be utilized. It is something that you would never be able to install in today's world, would be another dam like that, so, yes, to see it used, I agree. Thank you for your comment.
Just some other things that we've, folks we've talked to, again, nothing, this is just all preliminary, but we've talked to some folks where, you know, on some of these dams, when you put them back into service, some of the state fishery folks will require us possibly to put in a fish ladder on either side of the dam to allow fish to, you know, pass up through the stream. And there's folks out there now that have made a business out of, you know, manufacturing these fish ladders and selling these fish ladders that can also serve as, you know, some sort of recreational use, like a kayaking or tubing, where they can, you know, they're make them so they're sloped appropriately so they can be utilized in more than just one fashion, so it serves multiple purposes.
Opens up, opens up a pretty good door.
And the technology that's out there for, you know, that type of activity, that type of product, along with the turbine technology and the controls that make the systems more efficient to produce more power out of the same resource than they did 50 years ago or 100 years ago, it's amazing, it's dramatic. or 100 years ago, it's amazing, it's dramatic what can be done. It really is. So it's exciting to look at it and see it. And, you know, on a project this size, it attracts a lot of attention from folks. And, you know, the gentleman that called me today had, you know, subscribes to an R S S feed on the internet and he gets alerted anytime Hydro's mentioned in a news article. And he's down in Louisiana and he got the banner article today and, you know, scoped it out, grabbed my number, called me up. So, you know, we've gotten a lot of phone calls from folks like that and it's good to get it because we can see what other folks are dealing with, other folks are putting in place, other issues that they're, you know, having to navigate when they go through this process. So, you know, all of that stuff is all healthy and helps us put together a better plan, so.
Excellent.
I should have introduced myself for the first time I spoke. I'm Jim Henderson and I manage the Bennington County Regional Commission's Brownfield Program. And we too are also putting in a grant application to do brownfield assessment work. We have the same grant deadline as Dennis and Bill, November 22nd. It'd be great if we had an answer from the D E C before we do this, but I can't speak on behalf of my steering committee. We have a representation from several towns, including Walt, he's on our steering committee. And typically what we do is we get their approval for various projects that we commit to doing. And our records and files would show that we have a great interest in Powell Dam. As I began to say, I can't speak for the steering committee, but I'm very confident that if the D E C funding fell through and if we were to get our assessment grant, we would most likely be very interested in refunding the Phase 2 if it all worked out. So it'd be great if indeed you find out, let me know.
Sure.
If not, then it might help to strengthen our application if we were even to mention that specific project as an area that we would commit some of our funds to go to.
Sure. And, you know, this year the EPA is doing their, in the past, all the applications have gone into their region office and they're actually ranked and scored out of that region office. This is the first year where they're actually removing that process. They're sending them to, you know, some random person somewhere in the country who doesn't know anything about the project, so just gets an application and knows nothing about it, knows no history of the project. So you don't know how that'll, that'll enter into it. You can argue both sides of it, you know, really. So we're taking that into account, you know, when we put this application together. So it's a, it's a, the application itself is quite lengthy. I mean, it's probably going to be north of 50 to 75 pages. I mean, it's a healthy document that requires a lot of attention. And, you know, we've been at it for several months, putting together information, so. But it's helpful because it allows us to really gain a deep understanding of the project, what's required, what's needed, how to go forward. I mean, you go through the process. So even if the grant funding doesn't come through, it still has been an excellent teaching tool, you know, to understand what we need to do, so.
These grants are incredibly competitive. And there was another change in EPA last year where if an organization got a grant the previous year, they cannot apply for a grant this year. So it opens it up a little bit.
Little bit, yep.
There's a little bit less competition. So in our specific region, we will not be competing against the Windham Regional Commission who got a grant last year, for instance.
And, you know, and we, and for, you know, it allows, the grant application actually allows the applicant to go back up to 25 years, I think it is maybe even a little bit more, and use any old economic or socio-economic information about the area to help or strengthen that application. So any closing of businesses, you know, that shows how, you know, we utilize and revitalization of the economy in this North Powell, I mean, we can go back that far and utilize those examples of some lost industry, you know, to help strengthen the application, so. There are some things that are working in our favor. I mean, population being less than 1,000 is another one. You know, no other, no other organization is applying for grant in the town of Powell. The B C R C is, but I think that, I don't think that your assessment grant, our cleanup grant...
Yeah, we're not, we're not competition.
Yeah, so those are two, those are two separate, two separate grant applications, two separate divisions. So we very well might be the only cleanup grant application, you know, in southern Vermont, which only helps us. Because they will only issue, they will only award funding to one organization or entity in a, you know, in a region. So some of them, they classify as a region, so.
Well, good luck.
Thank you. And we'll certainly keep you folks updated.
Any questions from any of the board members? Anybody else on the side?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dennis. That was very informational and we wish you, obviously, the best of luck through this whole procedure.
Thank you.
One thing that I added, very simple, we had an issue this week where we needed, which Mike's involved as our emergency manager, and we need a list of emergency numbers. We should have a file in here. Mike should have them for anybody that has large equipment in an emergency like we ran into this week, so we didn't have to. We did some hustling, trying to find some numbers. And the phones were hopping and calling mothers and fathers and people to get cellphone numbers to try to locate people. We need to organize this so we can cut out that timeframe, so.
I've been thinking about that the last couple of days and if there's no place on that A P O E, I'll attach a separate paper with the contractor's name, numbers, and what they have available.
Yep. Because it's, you know, times of the essence in some of these cases and that was one of those instances where we had a very small window.
You might want to talk about that, too, for the folks at home regarding the North Powell, the bridge down by the post office, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
Yeah, well, it wasn't actually the bridge, it was probably about 150 feet, 200 feet down river from it.
Past the second time.
Yep. And what it was, was an ice jam that was created probably more than likely from a tree root that was a tree that was actually in the river under that created the start of it. And the ice built up pretty seriously and went flooded out and went a lot of the property owners' homes down there. It flooded out to Route 346 down by Indian Massacre Road. It was out into the road and there was a serious problem of people's property and endangerment to their own health in there. So we were fortunate to get ahold of a large excavator and got across people's property into the backyard and broke up some of the ice chunks in a nice calm fashion and got the water running very smoothly again and got the stump or the tree limb, it was probably, got what, 10, 15 foot long, probably about 16 inches in diameter, so it was a good sized chunk of log. And got that out of the river and, you know, it was dark when we finished and it was getting colder and that's a, like I said, it's a magic hour. Now, we started this project probably about quarter or three. So it don't leave you a lot of time to last few people together and get equipment on the scene, so. That's why I say we needed something a little more specific on getting numbers so we could get quicker, if we could.
I added a couple of things in there. I was notified in between the 10 and 10:30 hour of the flooding down there. And at 11 o'clock, I know Casey had already been there, I believe, at 11 o'clock I was on scene. And by that time, the one I was called about busted open and everything was running clear. And it was after that point, this other one made a jam and created problems.
Okay.
And when you called me there, I'd just gotten out of work and I was heading back down to check it out.
Okay, yeah, because I didn't find out about it, it was about quarter or three. It was the first I'd heard.
I was on the scene when I got the first call. I was there.
Yes.
Steve, are you suggesting that these phone numbers will become part of your local emergency operation plan?
I think it would be a good idea and I'd like this office to have them here, because I had Linda hopping back and forth on the phone, calling people's parents that I knew had cellphones, but we couldn't find their number. Figuring their mother and father know their number, get ahold of them, let's get the number. It's just, it's too many wasted steps.
I think Allison Lansdale, who works in our office, is our emergency management planner.
I talked to her.
She's, she's working on these local emergency operation plans, so.
I've been Ted Tech with her, she emails me all the time on stuff.
What we had here was, we had, like I said, a magic hour is what I called it, because it was so close to getting dark and getting real cold. Locally, we could have got equipment, I'm sure, from somewhere, but how far away loaded up and down here, working in the dark, round water on that ice is... So we were very fortunate that, you know, Morrison Enterprises was one of the numbers that called me back right away and he hustled down, his equipment was local. It's a large excavator and he did an excellent job. And he was very timely, so it's, it worked. But like I said, I'd like to, the better we can refine any of this, you know, it may not work as good the next time or it may work better, but I'd like to see us have everything in our favor the best we can, so.
I want to thank everybody that was involved, us, the homeowners alone, X S, the fire department standing by.
Yep, state police, everybody joined in because I told them we may need the road because I didn't know where we were going to unload this piece of equipment because we had a little problem down there, but it all worked together very nicely. Yes.
And one more thing, and long as we're talking about flooding, we were aware that the buoys in the dam are gone.
They went bye-bye again.
Bye-bye.
Somebody's got a hell of a collection of buoys somewhere.
Or the Hudson. Just one other thing, I was notified by one of our staff members that there was a propane tank that is, I think it's on the other side of the river, that must have gotten washed downstream. Somebody lost a propane tank and I don't know if that's something that they thought about or knew about or...
I hear nothing about that one.
Michael Thatcher told me you saw it the other day. I don't know exactly where it is, but if you wanted to call, he did say it was probably he could get to it. And I don't think it's a small one.
Is that a guess, real?
My surprise is that no one has said anything about it, that it's missing.
Now that we've mentioned it, probably at $4 a gallon, somebody would be down there later.
Yeah.
Anyways, I hope not, because that's kind of dangerous.
Michael's not going to be in tomorrow, but if you call me at the office, I can give you his cellphone number where he can be reached at home. He's working at home tomorrow and he probably tells you where it is.
And your number?
Jim Henderson, 442-0456. I'll be in at 8:00.
Thank you, Jim. If there is nothing more before us, we need to do some personnel policy amendments.
Oh, we don't need to go on the...
Take care.
Probably going to have to on that. Positive, I...
I'm not mentioning any names, are we?
Um, I don't believe we are. I think what we're doing is just some of the information maybe so into it. Yeah. Let's, kind of, everybody got one or something to...
That's right, we'll share it, Pop.
I should, Dale.
I didn't know we were going to be in personnel policy again.
I should know that the newest one is... All right.
All right, where's our...
What are we looking at?
I'm trying to remember, there was a buyout time and vacation stuff that we eliminated and somewhere the wording wasn't as clear as it should have been.
On page three.
Said it starts Section 19, vacation leave on page six.
Page six, see what they're talking about.
It's on page three, try to take it. We may... Okay, page five, full-time employees. Receive one, six, four, five, this may not be a cure to carry over, no, that's all right.
Talks about on page three, vacation.
Okay, no rollover, right. Taking our cashed in, the cashed in by the end of the current physical year.
Maybe I have the right one. Probably got a different problem.
Yeah, I was going to say we had a couple of these. Does yours say cashed in? Page three.
No.
Under vacations.
Nope.
Yours doesn't say cashed in either, right?
It's the one I have. I thought that was the one we adopted.
Location must be taken or cashed in.
See, the cashed in should not be in there.
Yeah, because it's been removed because...
Right, exactly.
You take it or you're on vacation.
You take it, be in the...
End of the current fiscal year.
Right.
Taking the annual vacation does not resolve.
Now, questioning, and I had a lady that was going to be in here that's very sharp on this also.
Don't see anything about cashed in.
And I'm not sure...
Page three, physical year.
We ain't got the same...
We got the same type of work as you got.
We should be doing physical year and this will hire.
We have too many policies, page three, right?
Because again, people are hired at different times. Comes up at a different time scale.
And this week.
So I'm not really sure how that works. At this point, if we have to come back...
I thought that was the one we adopted.
We don't stay at the 2:00, we're trying to do it.
You said say...
Because I think we ought to read through this real carefully now that we've got it.
We've got some planners here, too, that would like to discuss the budget review subject for the meeting.
So would we like to maybe try to schedule a special meeting next week and read this policy over? Try to finally put this thing to bed?
Take that comment back.
Yeah, I think so.
Different, different.
Yeah.
This is right. We're going to table it.
Okay.
All right.
Motion table.
Until we can maybe set up a meeting next week, special meeting. Deny our time just strictly to this, would be nice. Okay, motion made to table on second and on favor.
All right.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Make a motion, adjourn to, roll fund general budget work.
We got planners here.
Planners here, the ones that talks.
They're here for the budget.
And they're here for the budget.
So we're going into our budget thing, so they...
Adjourn to the roll fund and adjourn the budget.
General budget, okay.
Who's motioning?
I did.
We have a second from...
A second, huh?
From Ronnie and all in favor.
All right.
All right. Okay.
I just have one question about the budget. Do you have any idea when you guys will have it ready for us?
Not at this point.
It's out on the front wall the last Thursday. It's out on our bulletin wall.
It's Thursday of January.
So we're not going to get anything from the board until the 30th of January?
Unless we haven't done before then, but that's our timeline. It has to be done by.
The warning is going to be signed. At which time we're going to be having a special meeting to do that.
Right.
You know, get the help planners, that's it.
We're done.
I don't know, same thing, is he done?
Done with the TV, right?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yep, yep. Thank you.